All right. All right, good evening, everybody. And welcome to our council meeting tonight. We'd like to call this meeting to order. And let's see, Pastor Linda Ross, I believe, will be giving the invocation.
Praise is always in order, amen.
Amen.
Amen. Father, in the precious name of Jesus Christ, we thank you for this opportunity. We thank you for how the people of God have gathered together to begin to make decisions and be led by your Spirit for this county, for this town. And for that, we just give you praise, glory, and honor. We thank you, God, because the Bible began to say in Proverbs 29 and 2, that when the righteous are in authority, the people begin to rejoice. And when the wicked rule, the people begin to mourn. And I thank you for the gathering of these, because they have, eh, eh, begin to call for prayer, which mean their hearts are turned towards righteousness. So Heavenly Father, bless this meeting, bless those that are present, and in the midst of everything, no matter what's missing or broken, begin to heal, deliver, and set free in the midst of us. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you. All right, adoption of agenda. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Flick.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approval of consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Flick.
All in favor?
Yep.
Aye.
All righty. Comments from attendees? Do we have anyone wishing to speak tonight? Okay.
Good evening, Brother Gerard.
Good evening, Brother Oscar. Mayor, Council. And I love technology, but it stopped on me, so I gotta freestyle it. First of all, Awareness Month for jazz, the American classical music known as jazz. Happy April, everybody, and Happy Jazz Month. Also, awareness for African-American women's history, awareness for autism. And even though we all have done or in process of getting stuff ready for tax season, Happy Financial Awareness Month. Isn't that timely, right there? So, um, tonight I wanted to talk about, first and last, last month, I hate I got to miss it, I saw some good things were coming, but one thing that comes to mind, can hash it out later, but City Lake, definitely about growth. My favorite color's green because I like growth so much. I'm an Army vet, there's some other Army vets in here, we like growth so much. And green keeps you growth, and I hear a Marine murmuring in the back, be okay. And in this growth, one thing, small pause, some unfortunate things happened at City Lake in our lifetimes. There's some African-American and others who were drowned, there's some cold cases that are still open, there's some things that, I do believe in truth and reconciliation. If you heard me say numerous times, I want our city to be a model for rural areas. I spent some time in South Africa and Zimbabwe, and it does work. Greensboro did it, Philadelphia did it, Asheville, I think was one of them that did it, Kalamazoo, Michigan did it. Truth and reconciliation, in order to build trust, and it was so timely, the prayer that Reverend Ross just did, when the righteous can rejoice, I want to rejoice, I want all of us to rejoice. We've got to acknowledge shortcomings and things that were wrongly done, so that we can have the truth out and folks can resolve and heal. We know this, our areas, everybody's experienced trauma, so let's make sure we go through that healing process, we got to acknowledge before we can heal. The other piece, uh, didn't get acknowledged, the women's history, but I was thinking about it. Look at what ladies are doing in Richmond County. Mayor of Ellaby, lady, Mayor of Hamlet, lady, excuse me, Mayor of Hoffman, lady. So ladies and gentlemen, let's give the ladies a hand, y'all doing your thing, so appreciate what you all do. And the Ellaby, in case I miss out, please forgive me, uh, charge it to the head, not to the heart. But also, John Coltrane Music Edutainment Fest, October 4th. Our talent, our motto is always polishing the diamonds in our own backyard, using the talent, musicians, poets, artists, dancers, designers, want to make sure we promote our area. This is the anchor, I love Hamlet, but you've heard me say, Amy came last year, Abby's been the last two years, Maurice the last three years. Want to see the rest of Hamlet come, this is the anchor for the festival. Let's show love, let's represent and support all of Richmond County. And in the spirit too, for Women's History Month, Macy McQueen, first and only black woman to serve on the Richmond County School Board, under my, I've just been reflecting a lot on it, and I was thinking, what would Macy say doing a lot of this stuff going on right now in this time? So I want folks to feel empowered. We've made some progress, but we still got some progress to go and to grow, so let's keep growing, Hamlet, North Carolina.
Thank you, sir. All right, anyone else? Okay, item number six, recognition of Patrick Hogan on receiving his water treatment operator certification. Presentation by our Public Works Director, Robert Brown.
Good evening. Um, first of all, I'd like to give just a little bit of what it takes to get to this level. When we hire an employee at the water treatment plant, they have to be at the plant for six months of forty hours a week to even be eligible to take the state exam. Also during that time, they have to attend a week-long school for that certification level. Then they have to go to Raleigh and take an exam, um, as Patrick may say if he speaks. It's a little more than what you think of when you take an exam. He came back and, and he told us, he says, I don't think I passed. And so far, out of most of the people that come back and have said that, they're the ones that did pass. It's the ones that come back and say, oh, I've got this. They get the condolence letter from the state. But Patrick's been a, a big boost to what we're doing at the water treatment plant. So at this point in time, I'd like to present him with his C certification for water treatment and, um, hope he stays with us and hope he continues and goes for the next two levels. So, Patrick.
Thank you, Robert.
Thank you.
Would you like to say something? Be more than welcome. I'll be brief. Thank you, Robert Brown, for those kind words, um, he's very much correct. Lot more to the test than you would think, and it covers a wide variety of water. On that note, a lot more goes into your tap water than you would think. For the longest time, I thought you turn the handle and the water comes out, on the other side of it, that is not the case. I'd like to thank Benita Mullis for the opportunity to prove myself worthy of this job, and, um, thank you to the City of Hamlet.
Thank you. Congratulations. All righty, item number seven, potential purchase of 52 West Main Street.
Okay, so, um, the owner of this parcel pictured here, right next to our Opera House, is interested in selling a commercial business building adjacent to the Opera House, not the entire parcel, um, but just that part highlighted there in red. It's about fifteen hundred square feet, um, it is Zoned B2, general business, and it's located on our main street. We estimate the cost of the building to be about thirty-five thousand with closing. So we just kind of wanted to know your interest on if you would like to pursue it, um, if you're not interested, we can kind of let the property owner know that, um, we just wanted to gauge your interest.
Have you taken a hard look at sewer issues in the building?
We have, um, there's currently a utility issue that has an estimated cost of about twenty-four hundred.
To fix?
To fix, okay.
How would it benefit the City of Hamlet to own that, purchase that building? What's, what's the benefit?
I think we, um, I don't want to speak for John, but I think the way we kind of looked at it would be similar to how we acquired the Lakeside Venue, it would be something we, the city would probably own and then lease out to a potential business.
And right beside the Opera House?
Yes, that's correct, which could also be beneficial for future use of the Opera House.
What is the monthly lease, do you know, as of now?
I don't currently know.
I just don't see how it'd be an asset to the city to own that property for us to have to keep up and be a responsibility to us, I don't, just don't think it'd be an asset.
I agree with, uh, Mr. Sellers, I, I don't see where it would be beneficial or asset to the city to own it, uh, especially, I mean, they mentioned it's beside the Opera House, but the Opera House is closed, been closed for fifty years. Unless the Opera House was in full, in full service, having, having, uh, events there or something, I, that would be a, probably a good idea to purchase the building if the Opera House was in good shape and was being used, but it's not. And it's been closed, I don't know, what, fifty years, thirty?
Or longer.
Long time, I don't know, but.
It'd just be a holder, just to keep forward money in, it won't get anything from the enterprise system, it's just nothing. I think it'd be better if a private citizen would get in, take on that expense.
That, well, the owner can continue renting the place out to whoever. Whoever's in it now, if they want to leave, the owner, I'm sure there'll be somebody that will probably rent the building. Why, why should we own it? Let them own it and rent it and.
Be responsible for it.
Be responsible for the repairs and whatever they need, I don't know. I don't know, that's just up to you.
It's the sewer issue, um, the owner's issue?
Yes, I believe that's part of the issue.
You think that's part of his issue? Because he owns the other adjacent properties, doesn't he?
Yes, he owns that entire parcel, if you want to go back, so he would also have to subdivide that before he sold it off.
So it's, uh, he owns it as one parcel, so he's got to.
Yes, that's correct, there's about four or five businesses in that one parcel, currently.
Okay. What are the rental prospects, estimated rental income?
It's, it's roughly fifteen hundred square foot, and I think for, for Hamlet, North Carolina, right now, it's, uh, uh, forty cents, or, I'm sorry, uh, yeah, forty cents on the, on the square foot, so the, the math on that.
Six hundred a month.
Roughly.
How long's it gonna take you to amortize the cost at that rate?
There are, uh, potential people in, that would like to, uh, lease it currently, however, their current leaseee, and until that leaseee was to vacate the building, the city wouldn't be able to, uh, resolve the, the utility issues, and once the utility issues were resolved, then it, it would be re-rented. From my recommendation, or, or my advice, I, I think this also is better off to a personal business owner, but they wanted to offer it to the city first, so, uh, it's, it comes at a great cost, uh, to any entrepreneur, I think that it'd be a great startup business, so, you know, it's also good that if the city decides not to buy it, that we are, we're airing it out in this forum, because the people of Hamlet and whoever else is watching this and, and that could lead to a potential buyer.
Could the sewer be fixed by anybody else other than us for twenty-four hundred dollars?
That was the, uh, that was the quote that the, the current owner had received.
Okay, all right. And do you know how long the current lease or is, how long their lease is good for?
I do not, I do not know, do you by chance, Mayor?
Any other discussion?
Would the owner be interested in repairing the sewer issue before they sold it?
I think that that's part of the issue, and, uh, and I, I don't want to speak for the owner, but, you know, for him to resolve the sewer issue, he has to vacate the tenant, and then once the tenant's vacated, more than likely, they're not going to come back, you know, and I'm, I'm speaking on assumptions right now, uh, but then he's going to have to find somebody else to lease the building, which could take time, and, you know, time is money, especially when you're a private business owner, private, uh, building owner.
If they have sewer issues, how are they able to stay in there?
They're using the next door.
Yeah, I think they're currently using the next door's businesses utilities.
I think if we had a clean shot at it, it might be something worth considering, but if we've got a current occupant who has not indicated that they're interested in giving up their lease, and we can't do the repairs without the occupant vacating the premises, I'd, I think we'd just be home strong if we bought it. It'd just be something we'd have to hold on to till she decided to leave. I'd just, our recommendation is we not consider this as a viable purchase.
I don't see how six hundred dollars a month is gonna pay for it, though.
Is that a motion, have you?
Yeah, do we have a motion?
Have a motion that we do not consider this as a purchase.
Uh, sir, could it?
All right, all in favor? Any opposed? All right, item number eight, potential donation of Raleigh Street Properties.
Laundering, do they apologize? Wherever, just do this, you have a little work off of that?
That's fine, you can go ahead. So kind of in a similar vein here, um, the property owner of these two parcels pictured here, parcel one and parcel two, also approached the city, um, with the intention of donating these two properties. The first parcel is twenty thousand square feet, it's about half an acre, um, it currently houses a burned, single-family dwelling. And then the second, um, parcel is about ten thousand square feet with, um, no structure currently on it. If you want to go ahead to the next one. Um, so the first parcel is actually split-zoned, um, so kind of right beside the current structure, which you'll see in the next slide, um, it's actually Zoned B2, so it's a, um, general business district, and then the other half and the second parcel is Zoned R6, which is residential. Right now, the potential for development, the minimum lot size in R6 is six thousand square feet for individual, um, single-family homes and nine thousand for duplexes, so, it has a potential for a few more housing units than it currently has.
Six thousand for residential and nine thousand for duplex?
Six thousand for a single family and then nine thousand for duplex, yes. This is the current structure that's on there, um, uh, I'm not sure when it burned, but, um, I think that we discussed it with Chief Goodwin, and there is some training potential, the fire department could continue the burn.
What's the downside of acceptance of this property?
The city would take responsibility for it and likely either flip it or demo it ourselves.
Just to give a little bit of amplifying information on this, again, this is a nuisance property, and, uh, the, the current owner, he's a, an elderly gentleman, and he's essentially said, hey, I, I don't have the, the time or the, the patience to deal with, with the property anymore, and I would love to just donate it to the city, um, to get out of this nuisance property situation, uh, if the city would, would be willing to take it. Again, we wanted to bring it in front of council, just as an option, uh, but it also, again, brings this property out into the public eye, so if, if somebody else is interested in receiving it, and I, I believe that, just rough math, we could take those two lots and turn them into six lots. The, the remainder of that street is, has a few more nuisance houses on it, is a little rough and could use some new development, uh, however, it, it starts with, with one person, whether it be the city or, or a personal builder, you know, we just wanted to bring it in front of council and then also in front of the public eye as well.
Um, Chief Goodwin, what's the possibility of using this as a training exercise, getting rid of that property? Have we done the asbestos?
We have not.
And so we, if we took it and there was asbestos, we'd be responsible for the abatement.
That's right.
I recommend we table this and then we determine whether or not there's any asbestos, that's expensive.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Ms. Covington, just as a point of clarification, does council want to ask permission to perform an asbestos test, determine the scope of liability?
We'll have to before we can consider taking, accepting the property.
Thank you.
All right, item number nine, organization chart alignment.
It's a fairly simple request, uh, council, currently our Horticulture Department is lined under our Public Works Director, uh, Robert Brown, and this is the, the current structure of that with, uh, with Robert Brown and then the Assistant Public Works Director, Alan Cox, and the Horticulture team falling under it. We've had a few conversations over the last couple of months since I've been here, uh, between, uh, Doc and Public Works Department, they have requested the Horticulture, uh, be moved under the Buildings and Grounds Director, Doc, uh, to, to be better managed, and, and we all concurred with each other that it would be a good move for, for the city. Any questions?
Any discussion, questions?
So you'd move the Horticulture Bloomfield and Sweat to public buildings, right?
It, it would be the entire Horticulture Department just moves.
Three of them, okay, I got you, I see them now. I can't see them either, Gerard.
They would, they would work for Doc instead of, uh, Public Works.
I like that. Get something done.
Motion?
You need a motion?
Yes.
I make a motion, we, uh, agree with the proposed, what's been proposed to the, uh, council for the Horticulture Department.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Item number 10, encroachment agreement.
Um, so Richmond County is constructing a forty thousand square foot industrial shell building over on Industry Drive off of, um, seventy-four, slightly outside of Hamlet, and it's expected to house a light industrial company. Sewer to Industry Drive is provided by the city right now, and it currently serves Latacre and, um, various other larger buildings and, um, industries on the north side of the freeway off of Development Drive. So to serve the new shell building, approximately a thousand feet of new eight-inch sewer line needs to be extended on Industry Drive. The county is going to pay for the construction of the sewer line, and once completed and certified, then it will be turned over to the city to own and operate. And then, like other customers on Industry Drive and Development Drive, the shell building will be a county water customer and then a city sewer customer. So LKC, who's doing the engineering on the project, um, has sent the city a DOT encroachment agreement, um, and a NCDQ sewer permit, asking for the city signature to move forward. So, um, we're just looking for your approval on this.
Our moratorium has been lifted, right?
Yes, that's correct.
So we can justifiably serve this sewer line? I think we should consider a gift, if they're gonna build it and pay for it, I'd be glad to take it, if all I got to do is furnish sewer.
Counsel, this is, this is actually a great thing for the city, because we're able to extend our sewer line, no cost for other customers as they, they come in, and, uh, the, the county's agreed to pay for the extension and its entirety, and then we, we actually have an industry connecting to it, so that's more revenue for the city.
Right. I make a motion that we accept this encroachment agreement.
Flick.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, item number 11, City Manager's Report.
Thank you, council, uh, first thing I wanted to do is just thank Ms. Edna, um, you know, we've been, we've been pushing hard through budget season, and without her help, you know, I, I don't think that we would have been able to, uh, bring to council what we did yesterday, so, you know, I just want to personally thank her, she's an amazing asset to the city, and just invaluable. Memorial Park update, it does have new sod in the, the infield, um, and the outfield's been, been leveled and, and dragged, and again, this comes to another one of our really just amazing assets to the, uh, the city. Doc has done this work himself and went above and beyond and, and just, you know, made things happen after we had a horrible incident out there with the lights going up and, and the field almost looking destroyed, and within a couple of weeks, it, it looks great, so great job, Doc, I appreciate everything you've done. You know, update on our four-point million dollar grant from, from the state, we are currently fin- finalizing the estimates, uh, for approval with the state, and I'm hoping to send that out within the next week or two. Our water treatment plant goes into pre-bid, it got pushed to the right just Our water treatment plant goes into pre-bid. It got pushed to the right just a little bit. So now instead of, uh, it was supposed to be, uh, earlier this week, but now it's actually gonna be the sixteenth of April and the, the actual bid will go out in early May. Our wastewater treatment plant, good news on that is our permit that we've been waiting on since twenty-twenty-two is going out for, uh, it, it's bid in, or scheduled for a public notice, uh, in the next week. Uh, actually it dates April fifteenth. Next thing, our AIA grants in the amount of three thousand, three hundred thousand, which were a hundred fifty thousand each. We did get the letter of intent to fund from the, from the state. And then I submitted project estimates for that. They were approved. And then tonight with, uh, the consent agenda, we had them on there for the resolutions to be signed. So I'll be submitting those to, to DEQ and, uh, in the next week. And then once that's done, we will put together, put together a request for qualifications and start soliciting bids from engineers to actually do the work. Uh, again, just, uh, big thanks to not only Edna, but also council for, uh, the feedback on the budget and the, the support as we're, we're moving through, you know, my first, uh, budget season. So again, I really appreciate everybody's, uh, support and patience. Our VoIP phones, they are, uh, they're being ported currently as supposedly as thirty minutes ago. So we should have those, uh, phones up and running a hundred percent now to receive and, uh, to have outgoing calls. Uh, we were only able to use them for outgoing, so we should be able to have them going both ways now. I will be pushing out a request for qualifications for our sanitation, uh, um, uh, in the, the early next week so that we can look and see the, the cost of doing business versus, versus us versus contracting out.
Is that for the trash?
Yes. We do have a resolution on fee per structure that after yesterday that will be going to the county. I did talk to the county manager. Uh, he's appreciative and, you know, big thanks, uh, to, to Chief Goodwin cause that, that work was done mostly by him and the county is ready to receive the entire packet, which was a, a lengthy, uh, bit of askers or paperwork that he would need to turn in. So just really appreciative of, of Chief's work on that. And then lastly, big thank you to, uh, Ms. McKenzie Webb because due to their work, we're able to lock in our contract for our, our upcoming ordinance that was funded over this year and next year, for our unified development ordinance. And we did contract with, uh, Code Write, which is the number one, uh, code writers in, in the state. They're great and, uh, we have a, we have a good way forward. We're actually meeting them tomorrow. We get, most of the day we'll be with them. And we actually have city attorney's assistant that's gonna step in on part of that as well to, to talk the downsizing, uh, or downzoning legislation as well. And that's all I have. Depending on questions.
Alright, Mr. Martin, ready to talk about American Legion baseball?
Well, that's coming up. Uh, yeah, I wanna talk about American Legion baseball, but, uh, the city manager covered, some of the things that I wanted to talk about, uh, as far as repairs to the park. Doc and his crew have done a wonderful job. But just wanna remind everybody that the opening, uh, game, the first game of the season will be May twenty-third. That's a Friday night. And we want to honor the firefighters of Richmond County and that includes the paid or the full-time, part-time volunteers, anybody associated with the fire department. And, uh, and also to, uh, uh, support and honor the, uh, firefighters of Richmond County. Their fire marshal from Raleigh is, will be here. And he'll be, uh, he'll throw out the first pitch to open the season. So we look forward, I hope everybody, uh, a lot of people come, enjoy a, a good baseball game, free of charge. Bring your children, bring anybody. Just come enjoy a baseball game. We want to honor the firefighters by giving them a free out, a free night out, uh, with the family. Just come watch a good baseball game. And, uh, basically that's all I hear. Uh, they are gonna finish putting in the lights next week. I think it is Monday. Uh, that will be done. But all of the, all the repairs, not the repairs, but the installation of the lights will be done from outside the park, so there won't be any more heavy-duty trucks or cranes on the field. But they've done a great job in getting that thing repaired and getting it back in shape. And, uh, we still got a little work to do up there, but we got time and, uh, everything's gonna be fine. So, uh...
What time?
The, the, uh, opening ceremony will be at six-thirty. And the, uh, the game will start as close to seven as possible. We advertise six-thirty, game time seven. It may be a little after seven, I don't know, but we'll try to get it within thirty-minute period of, you know, what we do. We honor the, we'll have the mayors of, uh, Rockingham, Hamlet, El, Elbe, wherever, uh, Dobbin's Heights, uh, they'll all be out there to support and honor the, the county commission. They'll all, we've, we've got, uh, about everybody lined up to come out and support and honor the firefighters and, and, um, and be at the game. Other than that, um, I'll remind everybody again, next month, uh, we'll have a meeting before the twenty-third. So I'll make one more final appeal to the public and the firefighters and their families to come on out to the ballgame. Other than that, Mayor, that's, that's it.
Alright, thank you. Mr. Sellers?
I'd like to thank, it's really nice to see the city employees here, the police department, to come and ask. That'll save a lot of telephone calls and letter rights come to us and we can sit at straight hand and hear from it on that. And I'd also like to echo on what Brother Martin said. Doc, I know y'all been working like beavers down there and coming along. There's not a doubt that we're not gonna have a, have a great, uh, park. It'll be very safe. Thank you and, uh, keep up good work. Uh, that's all I have to say.
Mr. Close?
Like to remind everybody about Friday food trucks down at the depot and the Cruze Inn. Uh, to come down there. Get this frog out of my throat. Uh, I'm glad we're getting the phones fixed. I was tired of calling in and saying, if you wanna speak to assistant manager Lane Bailey, dial such and such. So maybe we won't hear that no more. So I'm glad of that. Also would like to wish everyone a, a happy Easter because we won't see you anymore between now and Easter. And I hope you enjoy Easter and go to your house of worship. And that's all I have.
Okay. Mr. Stewart?
Thank you to all the citizens coming out to the meetings. April is, is National Autism Month, so I, I applaud everyone, if you, any kind of platform that you have, to make that aware. We, as an educator, we owe it to those, those children, to receive all the, the, the equal opportunities and the education that they deserve. So please be aware and, and please promote, uh, National Autism Month. In that same token, April is also National Minority Health Month. So we need to promote that as well, um, in this country. And we like to, you know, a lot of times in our small towns, we don't think that things affect us. But we have a major disparity in health with, with minorities and, and, and people and kids of color. So let's make sure if you have a platform for that, that you promote that to make sure that all people and all kids are getting equity health insurance and, and things that they need to be successful and, and to move forward in life. Thank you Pastor Ross for that wonderful prayer. Happy Easter to everyone. And also our book sale, the, the library is having their annual book sale. And we wanna make sure, if you have gently used or new books to donate to the library, you can donate those this week and the actual book sale will be Friday and Saturday. Of this week at the library and you enter through the Rice Street location. So I look, I always look forward to that, that book sale. And if you go through, we all have stuff in our house we can get rid of. Look through your books and see if you can donate that stuff to the, to the, uh, library. The library is always in need. So please support and, and that's education as well for our children. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Procham?
Well, I too am tickled to see all of our city employees here. They're the big part of why we come and that's what we work for and they work for everybody in the city of Hamlet. They're our best investment. One thing I want to mention, and I don't know if anybody's noticed this, but it really kinda tickled me this morning. I found out, of course, we no longer have any North Carolina teams in the NCAA, but Houston is being coached by a coach from Laurinburg, Kelvin Sampson. And this is his fourth trip to the Nationals. So I think if you didn't know who you were gonna pull for, you need to give that some serious consideration. He's got deep roots in Scotland County and they're our border neighbors. So you can... It's, okay, alright. I didn't know that. When did it play? Oh, I wasn't paying any attention last night. I had a budget session last night. But anyhow, that's right. He is a, he is a Scotland County native and his father has some really deep historical roots down toward Pembroke. And I think it's interesting when people like this really kind of achieve the national spotlight and we know thirty miles away and we don't know anything about him. So... And I wish you all a happy Easter and for those of you with children, I hope you have a happy spring break. Enjoy them all and I know that Maurice will be glad to share them with you for at least a week. So that's all I have.
Alright.
I have one other thing. Uh, I'd like to thank the Hamlet Fire Department. They done, uh, I think it was Saturday with the Easter Bunny and all the kids went out and it was a big time. My grandkids went out there and they had a great time. So Chief, we appreciate y'all doing that and we appreciate everything you do like that with, you know, breakfast with Santa and breakfast with the Easter Bunny. So we thank you, that you think about that, cause lots of times we don't.
That's in conjunction with the Women's League, the Richmond County Women's League, is that what it's called? Yeah, so, yeah, yeah, they do a good job. Let's see, I have a couple of things. I'd like to congratulate the eleven and twelve-year-old Hamlet All-Stars Basketball. They competed in a tournament in Aberdeen recently and came in first place. So that's really nice. Also wanted to mention Food Truck Friday. It starts eleven o'clock, runs till seven o'clock, correct? And then the car show starts at five, four. Okay. So y'all please come out to that. It's always a lot of fun. Hopefully the weather will be nice and we'll all have a good time. And then, um... That's not this Friday. Got moved.
I didn't know it got moved.
You got moved to the twenty-fifth.
Okay, thank you.
I will say that the dedication, just to be sure, the dedication for the static display was supposed to be this Friday at five-thirty, but it was moved to the twenty-fifth at five-thirty because it wasn't quite ready yet. So anyway, but that's all I've got. Do we have a motion to go into closed session for attorney-client privilege?
So moved.
All in favor?